Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. A little bit better than that. Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, that's, uh, we're here for the Birmingham City Council Regular Meeting, scheduled March tenth, twenty twenty, a little past nine thirty. Uh, we're gonna have the invocation by Reverend Prince, Earlene Prince, and a pledge of allegiance by Council President Pro Tem Wardina Alexander. If everyone could please stand.
Let us pray. Most merciful God, we thank you for life this morning and for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us thus far and all the ones you will bestow upon us as we move throughout the day. Thank you for every seat that has been filled here today, for every mind and heart that feels the presence of this room. Only you know what we are setting out to accomplish today. We have an idea, a vision, hints, and daily instructions. We have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning. Your righteousness transcends all our efforts and understanding. Forgive us for our pride and any ideas we may have, that what we do here today will line our pockets with lucre and secure our names in the annals of history. Let us do justice to those who have elected us and show mercy to those who depend on us to get it right. We seek clarity and peace. Come fully into our situation as a group and individually. Sort out the muddled feelings and distorted thoughts that plague us. Cover us with a blanket of honesty and patience that is not of this world. As we struggle for solutions amidst differing personalities, let us release the bind of blame in exchange for accord. Remind us that you are the great I am and help us to continue to do the job that has been assigned to us all and to do it well. We ask these blessings in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk.
Morning, sir.
Good morning. Call roll, please.
Council President Pro Tem Alexander.
Good morning.
Morning. Councilmember Hilliard.
Present.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Present.
Councilmember O'Quinn. Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Councilmember Abbott. President Parker.
All right, uh, need a approval of the minutes, uh, from November fifth, twelfth, nineteenth, and twenty-sixth of twenty nineteen.
All right, this should be open for voting. I guess not. Councilmember Alexander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Hi.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
President Parker?
Yes. Okay. Uh, the minutes are approved. Uh, good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, Council. I'll be very, very, very brief. Um, one is, the city of Birmingham will host a tornado relief drive, um, today through Thursday, um, March, two March, which is March twelfth, from seven thirty a.m. to five p.m. at the Bowwell Auditorium. That address is nineteen thirty Abraham Woods Boulevard. Again, that's, that address for the Bowwell Auditorium is one nine three zero Abraham Woods Boulevard. Uh, we cannot accept clothing. However, we are accepting non-perishable, um, item, non-perishable foods, individually wrapped snacks, laundry detergent pots, bottled water, cleaning supplies, diapers, baby formula, and baby wipes, as well as heavy-duty trash bags. So again, uh, the city of Birmingham will be hosting a tornado relief drive for those affected in the Nashville area today through Thursday, March twelfth. Uh, second note, uh, Mr. President and Council is, Councilor Hunter Williams and I will host the District Two Town Hall Meeting on this Thursday, March twelfth, at Osseware Mitchell Middle School. Uh, the public will have a chance, like always, to meet with various department representatives and community partners at five thirty. It will start at six. Again, that District Two Town Hall Meeting is this Thursday, um, along with Hunter Williams, March twelfth, at Osseware Mitchell School. Uh, two brief more notes, which is the SWAC basketball tournament will be, um, held at the Bartor Arena, March thirteenth and fourteenth. And for more information, please visit SWAC dot org. That's S W A C dot org. And Birmingham's thirty-sixth Annual Saint Patrick's Day Parade will be held Saturday, March fourteenth, at eleven a.m. And I know you have a detailed presentation today, but the short of what the city wants to say is, as coronavirus remains at the forefront of our minds, I want you all to know that we will continue to stay in touch with the state and local health organizations and medical facilities as, as we will continue to monitor the situation. As of now, there are no reports of the coronavirus in the state of Alabama. We have created a link that provides basic prevention measures for the coronavirus. Please visit birminghamal.gov slash coronavirus, uh, to stay informed and updated from the city of Birmingham. Mr. President, that concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, there are any... Go ahead, Council Hoyt.
Yes, um, Mr. Mayor, I've noticed there have been two incidents of violence that, um, that have transpired in my district, and I've not gotten update on either one of them. Um, one was on Forty-first Street, uh, a block away from my home, and the other, um, was to be a hair arena that took place over the weekend. And certainly, I would like to have some update. Um, one was a murder, and the other was a shooting.
Yes, sir. We'll provide that information.
Council Hoyt, is that everything?
Yes. Well, and I, and I hope you talk about it, um, 'cause I get beat up so often. But, you know, we depend on the council and mayor working together. And to have fifty congressional persons to come this weekend and no notice, no invite, or any of that, and that's, that's not how we run the city. We depend on one another when things happen up here. And then for something of that magnitude to transpire in our city, the only elected official you have is that of the mayor because we were not informed. That's, um, that's disingenuous. That's, we shouldn't, you know, we shouldn't do that. You know, we've had issues with other mayors that do the same thing, but, you know, uh, unless you're running it by yourself, then maybe that's what you comfortably doing. But it's not fair to your colleagues. You know, at least one of us should have been there, if not all of us, and should have been invited to be there and to greet, um, these congressional leaders. Because that's the ones we got to go and talk to when we want funds. And so, you don't always talk to ones that are from your, uh, your congressional district. You sometime got to talk to folk across the aisle, so at least that's been my spirit over the years.
Yes, sir, Council Hoyt. We will, um, be addressing that matter, uh, so if you'll stay tuned, we'll, uh, we'll have some thoughts and, uh, comments and report back on that, uh, shortly. If that's okay with you, sir?
It's fine. You're my leader.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you. Uh, we're gonna move to, um, have a, a presentation or, or an update, uh, from, uh, the Jefferson County Health Department. Um, Dr. Williford, uh, he was, came out to Legion Field on Friday and met with, uh, residents, uh, from throughout the city of Birmingham to just talk about the coronavirus. And so, uh, I thought it was important, uh, as we hear about things in the news, and Mr. Mayor, uh, you know, your leadership as far as making sure the city is ready, I just wanted to just have medical personnel just come and talk for a few minutes. So, Dr. Williford, you wanna come up from the Jefferson County Health Department, and I want to thank them for their partnership, uh, as we move forward on this supportive matter. Good morning, sir.
Sure. Thank you so much for inviting me today. I really appreciate it. So, my name's Wesley Williford. I'm the Medical Director of Disease Control at the Jefferson County Department of Health. Um, I am, along with other people at the Jefferson County Department of Health, have been working on our local efforts to prepare for the coronavirus. And so I want to give you just a bit of an introduction.
Can, can you pull up just a little bit more so we can hear you? Okay.
Sure. Sorry about that. Um, I want to give you a little bit of an introduction about the coronavirus. So, the coronavirus is a virus that is not new to humanity. It's something we've seen viruses like it, but this virus in particular has not previously affected humans before. Um, it's thought to have occurred, uh, in, in Wuhan City in China and the Hubei Province, um, in very late December, excuse me, very late November, early December, um, in conjunction with, um, what we call a wet market, where you have animals that have been slaughtered, live animals, and humans, all in very close contact. And what happened, the virus jumped from a, from an animal to humans, and then it has been able to spread. As I'm sure you're all aware, this has spread, uh, around, uh, throughout China and around the world as well. Um, one of the things I want to talk about are some of the symptoms. One of the difficult parts about the symptoms for this particular virus is that it can look a lot like influenza. So, you see fever, cough, sometimes you have shortness of breath, and often have muscle aches. So, again, the symptom's very similar to, to influenza. We're still learning about exactly what happens with the syndrome. Uh, we do know that there are, some people get sicker than others, um, and I'll talk about that in a moment. Uh, but most people do end up having a mild flu-like illness. So, one large study that came out of patients that were evaluated in China, um, showed that seventy thousand people were studied in this. About eighty percent of those people did have that mild illness. However, fifteen to twenty percent of people ended up requiring hospitalization, so a much more severe level of disease. As far as the way this virus is transmitted, the, the, the specific name for the virus is SARS Coronavirus Two. So, you may have heard, in two thousand two, two thousand three, there was the SARS outbreak. That virus, uh, SARS Coronavirus One, just for perspective. Um, the, the way it is spread is through the small droplets of liquid that, that are produced in the lungs. So, when we cough, and we sneeze, when we breathe closely to people, the small droplets of fluid, fluid can be, uh, expelled, and those are the droplets that can cause spread of this disease. Uh, and the other thing, other concerning thing is that whenever you cough, these droplets can land on surfaces, and the virus can likely stay viable for up to two hours, where it can still, uh, still infect someone. So, those, that's why we talk about hand hygiene as much as we do. That's why we talk about cleaning surfaces, because it's that virus living on a surface that is concerning. But again, probably not going to survive there much longer than two hours. Um, as far as, uh, let's see, so is, is, as far as case activity in the United States and in Alabama, um, of course, we have no cases in Alabama as of yet. That may change. We're, we're kind of staying tuned to that. But in worldwide, there, uh, as of this morning, there were one hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-five cases, with the majority of those being located in, again, in the, the Hubei Province of China. Um, there have been four thousand and eighty-seven deaths worldwide so far. So, in the United States, there are seven hundred and fifty-five cases that have occurred, um, and most of those cases have, the majority of the cases have occurred in California, Washington State, and New York State. Uh, the numbers are continuing to grow as testing capacity has increasingly been more available. So, we may see much larger numbers in the coming days. And then, as I said, again, no cases in Alabama as of yet. Um, as far as treatment, unfortunately, there are no known medications that will definitively treat this. Studies are being performed, as we speak, on two potential medicines that may work for this. However, that's gonna take a little while for randomized control trials to be performed so that you can say definitively, yes, this does help a patient, or no, this does not help a patient. So, we're hoping to have that information in the coming months, but, um, it may not be, uh, certainly will not be tomorrow. Um, as far as vaccines, there is not yet a vaccine available for this. There are some vaccine candidates that are being evaluated. The, hopefully, trials will begin in the next month, the month and a half worldwide. A lot of different groups are working on that at present. But in all reality, it will be at least a year before we see a vaccine that can be produced and given to the public. So, as far as prevention, I think this is the most common question that I get, is what the public can do to help out to avoid, uh, this virus, to avoid any respiratory illness during this time, uh, time of the year. And I think these things kind of overlap. So, the first thing, and I know this is a bit counterintuitive, but I have been urging people, please, if you are able to take a flu shot, please take your flu shot. Not that it's going to protect you against COVID nineteen, but that it can prevent you from catching the flu, which we're still having very high levels of flu activity in our community. And the reason that this is important is because the concern for COVID nineteen is, is that it, we may see, if you have a flu epidemic, or a flu activity being very high, plus the COVID nineteen at the same time, we may overwhelm our medical systems, and that's what we're trying to prevent. So, if a person can take the flu shots to protect themselves and protect their families, we, we encourage you to do so. It's still, it's not too late, by any stretch of the imagination. Uh, the next thing is that we, we, we really focus on hand hygiene, wanting to make sure that we're washing our hands multiple times per day. Soap and water is perfectly fine. Alcohol-based gels, as long as they have sixty percent alcohol, is very, is very good and will work against this type of virus. While the studies have not yet been done to definitively prove the type of virus that it is as highly susceptible to soaps, alcohol, cleaning solutions that we use commonly. So, those will work for this virus, and I can say that, I, I feel very confident about that. The next thing is making sure, as we mentioned before, cleaning environmental surfaces as much as possible, especially in areas that see a lot of traffic, to where you have a lot of people congregated together. Um, the other thing, this is hard because it takes a little bit of retraining, is making sure that we're using good cough hygiene, where we cough into our elbow, making sure that we're, what, the reason we say that is to try to decrease that droplet spread. So, if I cough right now, which I promise I won't, um, the, the droplets could sort of spread out in, in a large direction. But if you put it, put your, your hair, elbow over your mouth, you're going to block that spread and limit the, the chance of disease spreading. The next thing is making sure that if you are ill, if you're, if you're feeling fevers, if you're coughing, if you're, if you're not feeling well, making sure that you will self-select and try to stay out from work. Because what happens is you take whatever disease you have, whether it's COVID nineteen, whether it's the flu, you take that to your coworkers, and then they take it home to their families, and that's how we see large-scale spread of the disease. The next thing is, if you're, again, if, again, if you're ill, you also, besides avoiding work, you also want to avoid large crowds because, again, that, that's more chances for the virus, or any virus, to spread. And then, the next thing is, we're, we're probably coming up on a period of time when we're gonna start initiating social distancing, where we want to make sure that we're, we're beginning to try to limit some of our, uh, some of our interactions as much as we can. Uh, you know, if, if something's not necessary, maybe think about it a little bit. And, but probably the biggest thing is kind of giving a six-feet, uh, amount of space between people because, again, that, that's where the radius of those droplets are gonna be the highest, the highest concentration. So, the recommendation from the CDC is six feet of distance. So, who is at highest risk for this particular... I see a lot of heads looking around. So, so who's at highest risk for this particular disease? So, we, the, in, in Washington State, a lot of, a lot of concern is had for, for older adults who may be more vulnerable to these, uh, diseases and have shown to have higher rates of bad outcomes with it. People who have heart disease, diabetes, lung disease, um, really, or, or any other, um, medical condition that might weaken their immune system, those are gonna be the people who stand, stand the highest risk for hospitalization with this particular virus. The last thing I want to do is quickly dispel some rumors that we've been hearing locally. Um, one of the questions I get asked most commonly is whether or not, um, a person should worry about opening packages that have been shipped internationally. And like I was alluding to earlier, again, that virus only survives on surface for a very limited period of time. And then the time it takes to ship something from around the world, the virus will no longer be viable. So, yes, it's safe to open a package if you've ordered it from another part of the world. It is safe to open. The next thing is, I've heard people say, well, I've had my pneumonia vaccine, um, and I should be safe from COVID. And I'll say, well, it, the, the pneumonia vaccine helps. A lot of older adults, age sixty-five and older, will often have a pneumonia vaccine, but it protects against a bacterial pneumonia, which is different from, uh, the viral pneumonia caused by COVID nineteen. So, it, it helps protect you from other things, but it doesn't necessarily protect you against COVID nineteen. And then probably the most important thing, and because we, we've seen a lot of this on the news, uh, there's been a run on masks, and, and everyone's thinking, I need a mask to wear in public. And I want to defensively say, the masks for public really do not help to prevent you from getting the disease. But what they do is they prevent you from spreading the disease if you have it. So, the best place for those masks to be used is really when a person walks into a doctor's office, if they're ill, because it's meant to decrease their chance of spreading the virus to other people in a small area. So, the, and, and the other problem with the masks is that the surgical masks they use, the sides are often open. And if they are not worn very, very carefully, the, the value of them will be diminished, and they won't, they won't really provide that much protection. So, that's one thing we, we've really urged people not to try to get the masks because they're really not helpful. And, and especially with a lot of price gouging going on right now, that, that may be a financial, um, adversity for people as well. So, with that, I'll, I'll, I'll finish up, and I want to open to any questions that the council might have.
Yes, ma'am.
I was told recently that the strain of flu that's going around is not one that was included in our shots that we got. Is that accurate, or is that a rumor also?
The, the last thing that I saw was that the, each year, the, the flu, we, we kind of look at, give it a score, like, how, it's matched to the, what's circulating. The last I had seen was about a fifty percent match, which, that, I know that doesn't sound the best, but that's actually good. Some years, we've been as low as twenty or thirty percent. So, there are still strains that would be covered by that flu shot, but there, there may, that, that's always the risk with a flu shot. The, in, the particular year, it may change, and you may have a different, uh, virus that's circulating. So, I would say that it still has benefit, but it may not all protect, you, you, there's no guarantee that it will definitively protect you from the flu.
Okay. So, if you get the flu, having had the shot might make you have a milder case?
Exactly.
Even if it's not the one that's covered?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I guess, yeah. And then, then there's, there's a lot of data to support that, e, having a yearly flu shot, e, even if you do catch one that's not covered, you do have a, a decreased rate of hospitalization, and it's less, it's more difficult to get incredibly sick.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
No, I was just gonna say, uh, their thorough job, um, did better than the president, so I appreciate that.
He's still gonna shake hands with you, so.
We, we have been doing the elbow bump. That's what I'm trying to do more here.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for bringing this information to us. I did want to say that I'd heard on, or watched on TV this morning, and it's also how we wash our hands. I think that they were saying. So, could you tell us more about that?
Sure. Uh, one of the most important things is, with, with hand washing, again, most any soap will do, because really, the, the purpose of the soap is kind of a basic substance that disrupts membranes of viruses. The, the real trick is making sure you do it long enough. And because, they, they say sing happy birthday to yourself twice, which, you know, if you're in the bathroom singing happy birthday yourself, you may look a little odd, but you know, it's, it's what we're doing now. Um, you want to make sure that you do it long enough, but you really want to make sure you're scrubbing your fingers, scrubbing in between your fingers, on both sides of the hands, and really doing it thoroughly. And it doesn't have to be scalding hot water by any means. It is, warm water's fine, cold water's fine for most soaps. So, um, as long as, it's really more about the length of time.
Yes. I, I'm curious to know whether, uh, what ages is it affecting, uh, what is there, is it a, uh, and I, I know this may sound silly, but is it a, is it a, a certain race that it's moving through? I, I want, I want to, you know, get to elaborate on that.
So, I would say, as far, as far as the data regarding the ages, what, people who we see most adversely impacted are gonna be people over the age of sixty. And with each decade of life after that, um, the, the rates of complications do go up. It's been very interesting. Children have seemed not to get terribly sick with it, but they are very capable of, uh, they are very capable of spreading a lot of it. And so, that, that, that's something that's still being studied as far as children. But by and large, uh, younger people don't seem to get as sick. As, when I say younger, I mean below eighteen.
So, the millenniums aren't, aren't getting it. It's, it's, you know, I'm on the borderline. I'm like fifty-nine. I'm just like, ooh, ooh. I'm like right up under that head. So, the millenniums aren't getting it. Uh, Clint, I'm gonna have it. Wow, wow. Hmm. Okay. All righty. Okay, ma'am. You say it, huh? Mr. Council Woods, did you have anything? You're good. Okay. All right. Well, cool. Uh, anybody have any questions? I want to thank you. Uh, I guess, is there a number, I guess, a website people can reach out of?
Yes. Uh, so, I'll, I'll always suggest following with the CDC dot gov at the COVID nineteen page. If you just type in CDC coronavirus, you'll find what you need. Most updated information, J, uh, Jefferson County Department of Health, jch.org. We also have links to that if anyone has any questions. And, uh, we try to keep that updated and, uh, really trying to keep our, you keep getting messages out to the community.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much and, uh, for all your great information. Thank you again for, for, uh, the presentation you did on, on Friday.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. All right. We're going to, um, move now to the consent agenda.
Okay. Consent agenda starts on page two, with items three and four. At page three, we have items five, six, and seven on consent. Page four, items eight, nine, ten, and eleven are on consent. Page five, items twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen are on consent. Page six, items eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one are on consent. Page seven, items twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven are on consent. Page eight, we have items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three on consent. Page nine, we have items thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven on consent. Page eleven, I'm sorry, page ten, we have items thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one on consent. Page eleven, we have items forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five on consent. Page twelve, we have items forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty on consent. And on page thirteen, we have items fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five on consent.
Okay. Uh, anybody want to take anything on, take stuff off? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, um, Mr. President, I would like to remove items eight, nine, and ten from consent. Those are on page four, and item thirty-seven from consent, and it is on page nine. Thank you.
Eight, nine, and ten.
Eight, nine, and ten, and thirty-seven.
Okay. All right. Council Hoyt, did you want to? We'll go this way, and then we'll come back. Council Hoyt, you're good? Okay. Council Woods, we'll work our way back. Okay. All right. Cool. Um, there are a couple of addendums, and I guess we'll take those up. Um, yeah, we'll just take, let's go ahead and get the consent agenda, and then we'll go from there. Um, your motion for the consent.
I move the acceptance of the consent agenda with the items listed.
Sir. All right. I need to read my tag. Uh, all items designated as consent or routine and non-controversial will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearings or requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda or to business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Before we vote, item fifty-six is not on consent, right?
That's right.
Okay, it's not. Okay. All right. Just want to make sure. Okay. All right. We're ready to vote.
Uh, was that Council Abbott and, um, Alexander?
Yes.
All right. Voting should be over. Council Hoyt and Alexander?
Yes.
Okay. Council Hoyt?
Yes. Okay. And I said yes as well.
Okay.
All right. Uh, the consent agenda passed at six to zero. Uh, real quick, um, I wanted to do a travel addendum, a travel item for Daryl O'Quinn, uh, from March sixteenth through twentieth, uh, to, uh, go to the, uh, National Shared Mobility Summit.
Uh, this is for UC first vote.
Uh, we make it item fifty-seven. We can, we can make it, uh, we make it UC.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
All right.
All opposed, second vote.
All right. Move the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
All right.
All opposed, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right. One other thing, we can, uh, let's make this an addendum number fifty-seven on the committee assignments, uh, from, uh, we need to make sure we pass that. Uh, so, need a motion.
Where is it?
I'm moving, I'm moving second.
One, one second, sir. I don't, I don't have the item. Um, motion was made by councilmember? Okay. Second was. Okay, second was Alexander.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, should be up. Voting should have started. All right, council member Alexander?
Yes.
Council member here?
Yes.
Okay, President Parker, I think that's up.
Okay. All right, the item passes.
Okay, give me one second to get situated here, please. So fifty-seven, we had the UC fifty-seven's first, and so we'll go to item one.
So you're gonna call up one and two?
Uh, that's fine. A resolution relative to the application, Ferris Incorporated for the transfer of an off-premise beer and wine license to be used at Say Mart, four thousand Jefferson Avenue, Southwest Suite, A, Birmingham, Hearing of Honor, parties, item two. A resolution relative to the application of Ferris Incorporated for the transfer of a lounge retail liquor class two license to be used at Say Mart Package Store, four thousand Jefferson Avenue, Southwest Suite, B, Birmingham, Hearing of Honor, parties. Motion, please. Motion on that?
Move aye.
Second.
Okay, the item is before you?
We called, both of them went in too, right?
I did.
Okay. Uh, Counselor, um, Houghton, um, will you carry that one? Because of the chairman, Counsel Williams, is not here, and Counsel Woods just stepped out, so he's on that committee, so, um, I'll do it. Do we have a report from, I guess, from the, just the city, city attorneys, or?
I can't call him. It's nothing.
Okay, okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item came before us two weeks ago, and it related to the transfer of a liquor license for this establishment. And what had been asked is that the owner, who was requesting the transfer, would go back to the neighborhood. I believe it was reported at that time, there was more of a number of members of the neighborhood were undecided, as were against it, but there was some unreadiness for the neighborhood as far as just this establishment, and how it relates to some of the other instances of things that are being seen in the neighborhood. And I just wanted to be sure that you relayed it to us. I know the neighborhood meets tonight, but I know that you all had made an effort, that you wanted to work with the neighborhood and with the neighbors in that area to support community efforts in there, and I just wanted you to describe again what your efforts were going to be to really subside some of the issues that the neighborhood had, and some of the concerns they had.
Correct. What we've done is-
Tell us who you are and-
I'm John Aaron, and this is Ferris Majetti. And he's gone back to the community. Unfortunately, the, there was not a meeting, so he's not been able to go back to the meeting. But what I want to talk about is, we can sit here and we can promise you, but what he's done is, he has stores here in the city. He's got one on Forty Street, and he has invested a lot of money into the community. He purchased the property. He took it from a rundown store, made it safe, and is now building onto it. He will add a restaurant to it. He's invested approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into that store in two years, to make it a part of the community and to service the community, and that's what he's going to do with this one. He's got to get it leased, and then he's got to do, he's got option to purchase it for a pretty substantial price, and then he's going to make it part of the community. And to do that, I think helps everything around it. That, that's the problem, the, the issue is not with the store. The issue is with what is around the store, and the concern that the community has about his, his story and the effect on it. He's going to change that, but he's got to have the opportunity to do that. And so, instead of sitting here and promising you, go by the Forty Street store, look at, see how much money he's invested, see what he's done, and, and that tells you what he will do in the community.
Well, I want to thank you. I do want to tell you that for this particular establishment, I do pass it just about every day. And so, again, there was concern for the community, just how you all may attribute to other things that are going on in the community, and you can't be held responsible for everything that's happening on that block. And so, I, I, I feel that I can understand that, and I can respect that fact. But I do appreciate the fact that you've gone back and tried to address some of the issues, and really want to be a community partner, and so that is appreciated. And that was all, I just wanted to be sure that the community, and I don't know if there's anyone else here to speak, Mr. President, to that, but if any other counselors wanted to have anything to say, questions about it.
Well, I think it's always important to, to be a community partner.
Yes.
We understand that people come into the community, and they're, they're in a very fortunate situation where they're able to purchase nice commercial properties, but it's beyond just the profit to the business, but it's also giving back and then getting involved in the community that's around you, to help solve some of the issues and problems. So, it's good to hear the councilwoman say that you seem to be aware of your surroundings, your environments, and that's very important. Of course, chair in economic development, I like to see businesses that are tax-based and giving back and getting involved into the city. So with that said, I like to see you keep up the good work. Please be, be mindful of the people that you serve in your community, because they can take their business elsewhere, but you're serving a need, and serving a need, that's very important. So thank you for being cognizant of what you do.
Yes, sir, thank you.
That's all my questions, Mr. President.
Okay. Were there others that had? Counsel Houghton, Counsel Abbott, did you have?
Yeah, I did want to ask one question. Previously, we used to receive incident reports from the police department. Detective Patterson used to do that for us, and we have not been hearing incident reports in recent times, and I was just wondering, is that because there are no incidents at this location?
They have.
I guess the chairman of the committee's not here, but-
Can I, can we speak to-
The chairman of, well, not the chairman of the committee, but that Birmingham police officer that usually gives those reports, once you just stepped out after you all approved your consent agenda, so there was nothing for him to actually share in regards to this establishment.
Okay, well, I just wondered if that meant there was nothing that had happened in this area, because it sounded like, do you know, I mean, you-
There was theft of property was the only report that was, that was provided at Public Safety, and that was several years ago.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. That was my only question.
Okay. Counsel Houghton, did you have? Okay, sorry. All right, good. All right, well, we're ready for vote? Yeah. Mr. Clark, we're ready for both one and two.
Okay.
I think Counsel Alexander may be down.
Are you down?
I must be down.
Okay. Counselor Alexander, how would you like to vote?
Yes.
Counselor Houghton, I see you, okay. Uh, who am I missing? Counselor Woods, is he, is he out? I think that's everybody, I think. Two, four.
All right, that, that item passed. Those items pass, rather.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next item.
Councilmember Abbott, am I correct, did you move eight, nine, is that correct?
Eight, nine, and ten.
And ten, okay. Item eight is next, then. Item eight?
Do you want to call them all together?
Get them all together, they're all related to one another.
Item eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a construction right-of-way agreement between the City of Birmingham and Lamar Outdoor Advertising, wherein the city would permit Lamar to enter onto nineteen thirty-eighth Avenue North for the purpose of raising the sign frame located on the back of the Boutwell Auditorium. All costs incurred as a result of this agreement will be the responsibility of Lamar, with no expenditure from the city. Item nine, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a construction right-of-way agreement between the City of Birmingham and Lamar Outdoor Advertising, wherein the city would permit Lamar to enter onto eighteen oh one Seventeenth Street North for the purpose of cutting down and removal of a tree located on the property. All costs incurred as a result of this agreement will be the responsibility of Lamar, with no expenditure from the city. And item number ten, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a construction right-of-way agreement between the City of Birmingham and Lamar Outdoor Advertising, wherein the city would permit Lamar to cut down a tree located at eighteen oh one Seventeenth Street North, which due to the new ramp construction obscured the view of one of his existing outdoor signs. In return for the removal of the reference tree, Lamar at its expense will raise the sign frame attached to the back of the Boutwell Auditorium, which due to the new ramp is currently totally obscured. All costs incurred as a result of this agreement will be the responsibility of Lamar, with no expenditure from the city. Motion on those items?
Uh, move the item.
All right, the items are before you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. President, my name is up.
Yes, ma'am, I can't see it, but yes, ma'am, go ahead. I figured you would want-
Why can't you see it?
I don't, because we're trying to get the system up and going.
I think he's down.
I'm down, that's why.
I keep poking that button, it keeps on, it keeps on undoing itself.
But I figured you would want to talk on these, so take it.
Oh, I do want to talk on this.
Yes, ma'am. So take your time.
I am absolutely appalled that we would cut down a tree so that Lamar can have a better view of its billboard. What a, what a stupid thing to do. We want to let a billboard be seen better, so we're going to cut down a tree that's probably fifty, sixty, who knows how many years old, so that a billboard can be viewed better. There's something wrong with this. Tree City USA doesn't mean a whole lot if you allow billboard companies to cut down your trees just because the tree blocks the, the great beauty of a billboard. You know, it would be wonderful if we could get rid of every single billboard in our city. Our city would look so much better. We can't do that, but we can keep our trees regardless of whether they block the view of a billboard. In my opinion, billboards are litter on a stick, and we have a lot of them in Birmingham. They distract drivers, it's like having a giant eighty-foot TV screen sitting out there, and we're going to cut a tree down so that Lamar can have a better view of a billboard. I will never, ever, ever vote to do that, and I hope my colleagues won't do it, because this opens a floodgate. How many other trees are in the way of a Lamar or other billboard that we might want to cut down?
Do you want to hear the report, and then come back and have some more comments?
I'd love to hear the report, because I read everything, and it said we're cutting it down so Lamar's billboard can be seen better. The contract says that.
Yes, ma'am. Are there others that will speak, or do we have a report from, from the committee? The committee chair is not here. Mr. Mayor, do you have a report for us, or? Okay. Counsel Abbott, you care to have some more comments?
No, I think I've said what I have to say. I just, I'm just, I'm appalled. I just cannot, and, you know, and I know we're, we're trying to get our sign moved for ten bucks, but we're going to sacrifice a whole tree. A tree that it took God a long time to grow, so that we can see a billboard better. And I'm just, I'm just, that's it. I'm, I'm just amazed. I mean, I, I'm ready to vote if we need to vote.
Okay, you want to delay it and get some more information, or?
Oh, yeah, let's delay it a week.
Okay. All right, we'll move all three of them. Okay.
That will give us time to come up with another excuse for cutting it down.
I'll give her another excuse. Maybe she'll like this one, maybe she won't. I know how she feels about trees, it doesn't matter, doesn't matter if the tree is causing damage to a city facility, it still won't please her. Of course, there's this thing with Lamar as it relates to the interstate being rebuilt, where that, where that tree is, but that tree also hangs over our municipal court, which has caused significant damage to the, to the facility's roof. That's not necessarily part of the contract, but we have been in constant contact with Chief Parks over many years about this topic, about the damage to that tree. There's emails to suffice as it relates to our operations, and while given to office, when calls have to come out about damage to that building based on this tree, that probably is still unsatisfactory. There would be no satisfactory answer for one of your colleagues, but that's, that's what it is.
But this tree isn't next to the municipal building. This tree is next to the building that Asfa is occupying. See, I have this large picture of this large tree, and I know exactly where the tree is. It's the property, it's on the same piece of property.
Mr. President, this building is the municipal court building.
Well, I'd still like a week delay to go and visit the tree, and if it's damaging a city building besides putting leaves on the roof-
Yes, ma'am.
-you know, there might be some discussion here, but the agreement says that it's because it's blocking the view of the billboard.
Okay, all right, that's fine, okay. Um, you think you-
So I move for a one-week delay.
Okay, and you're gonna go, we're gonna go out?
And visit the tree, yeah.
You'll let us know, I guess we'll work through the weather, but, okay, I'll go out there with you. Okay? Okay. All right. Mr. Mayor, if we could have someone from, yeah, I'm on second.
You all are professionals, you go out there and look at that tree, have fun.
Okay, all right. Okay. That'd be fun. All right, what we're gonna do is, we'll do a one-week delay on items eight, nine, and ten. So that's the motion.
Yes.
Clark?
Madam-
Yeah.
Madam President, and I will share whatever little skills I have in horticulture with you as we observe the trees.
Okay, all right, let's vote on the one-week delay for eight, nine, and ten together. Okay. All right, that item passes for a one-week delay, four to one. Okay, next item.
I think it's item seventeen. Item seventeen, a resolution rescinding the authority granted by Resolution Number twenty thirty-four dash nineteen, and authorizing the city attorney to withdraw the request previously authorized by Resolution twenty thirty-four dash nineteen.
All right, is there a motion, just so we can get it up?
Move aye.
President Pro Tim Alexander and President Parker.
Okay, got it.
All right, it's up. All right, I'm gonna move for a one-week delay. All right.
All right, voting should be up.
Okay. All right, that item passes. Next item.
I think we're going to thirty-seven. Item thirty-seven, a resolution admitting Resolution Number four fifty-two dash twenty, adopted by the council, March the third, two thousand and twenty, approving payment to Clark Mosquito Control Products Incorporated, St. Charles, Illinois, for the purchase of Anvil two plus two ULV adult aside for the puppet works department to change the amount from a total cost of two thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars to thirty-nine thousand six hundred dollars. Motion, please.
Move aye.
Item is before you? I'll change the attendees, I'm sorry. Okay, he's back, I'm back. All right, the item is before you, Mr. President.
Counsel Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I guess last week we were buying one drum of poison to spray all over our citizens and city to supposedly kill mosquitoes. citizens and city to supposedly kill mosquitoes. Now we're going to make it sixteen drums. Now, I haven't seen the first bit of education, educational material or information going out to our residents about how to prevent mosquitoes. You know, the interesting thing about mosquitoes is they don't fly very far from where they're hatched, so if you're growing them at your house, they're gonna bite you. They're probably gonna bite your neighbors, too. But we don't do that, we go out and spray, we blanket our city with poison that is supposed to kill mosquitoes, but we spray after the time of day when mosquitoes come out. You know, mosquitoes come out at basically dawn and dusk to bite you, and we spray after that. So we go out and we spray all this poison all over the city, and I guess it's to make people feel good, but what else are we killing? And what might be, be, be killing in the next, maybe twenty years from now, like with Roundup, you remember how they told us how safe it was? You could spray it on yourself and it wouldn't hurt anything? Well, the lawyers are making a lot of money off that poison now because they've decided it caused cancer. Now, this, this poison is supposed to be safe. Do you believe it? Does anybody on this dais believe that this is a safe poison? To be spraying all over our neighborhoods? I'm not voting for this item. I certainly know if Dr. O'Quinn was here, he wouldn't be voting for this item, and I just, and, and I am glad that we can opt out and not have this stuff sprayed at our house if we don't want it. But I can tell you, if you go out there and you breathe those vapors, that poison smells like poison. So, I just, there are other, other cities have stopped doing this, I don't understand why we continue. Instead of having an educational program for our citizens to teach them how to prevent mosquitoes, we're just going to go out and blanket the community with poison. I think it's wrong, I think it's the wrong thing for us to do. That's all, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am, um, let me ask you, uh, well, I can't see the speakers, but let me, okay, you have, um... If we, as we've done in other, um, issues, kind of ask that they bring back an educational program, uh, at our next, I mean, just... Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor? I was addressing Councilor Abbott's, uh, comments, I, I understand. Would that, is that something that's amenable, um...
Well, I think that's an important thing to do. If we're creating our own problem, let's learn to do something about it, and then we won't have to spray poison all over the city.
Okay, so when you say an educational, I mean, just give us, so, because we want to make sure that we put it on our next...
Well, you know, obviously, I mean, you can go on the internet and find all the information you want about mosquitoes, it does not take a rocket scientist.
Right, right.
But, they only breed in standing water, but you can breed mosquitoes in the cap of a soda bottle. You know, so running water, streams, don't have mosquitoes in them. Swimming pools that people have let sit until they grow frogs and algae, they can have mosquitoes, and so can all these pots and saucers and five-gallon buckets, and even your gutters, if they're not installed properly, can grow mosquitoes. So, I'm just saying, a little education helps.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
On these two topics, trees and mosquito spray, again, you have a situation where it doesn't matter what information we give. But I think it's important to give the information. I think we all know, very similar to, um, even in a situation last year when we had to tear down trees, um, for a residential site to be rebuilt, we replaced trees. Very similar in this situation, not only for this Lamar billboard, but for this, um, tree that's causing damage to our building, that tree will be replaced as well with another tree. In this situation, I think there's some information about education. Each of you all received an overwhelming detailed email about mosquito spread education, which we do every year. Um, we're adding an additional tool this year, but they sit up here on this dais and say, "We're not sharing information," or "There's not an educational component to it," it's simply not true.
Okay. Okay, alright, who else had comments? Alright, um, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna call for a vote, but I think, um, is it, Councilor Abbott, is it more of flyers that you're wanting out, or more information disseminated to the community on social media, is that kind of what you're asking, or?
Well, we have a lot of, of citizens in our city who don't do the internet.
Okay, I understand that, but that's why I said do flyers.
And, you know, I've even, in, in my own neighborhood, where probably most people do have the internet, you know, I've even offered to put outdoor hangers if somebody will just give them to me. You know, we have a group of people that would be willing to do that.
Okay.
But, um, you know, and I realize that's labor, labor-intensive, and that's why you have, use volunteers.
Okay.
I don't think anybody's in favor of mosquitoes.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
We give a homeowner's guide to mosquito control, we distribute it through the Office of Public Information, we distribute it through our three-one-one system, we distribute it through our Community Development C R R programs, we distribute it through our neighborhood meetings, we distribute it through our Office of Customer Service, and we distribute it through our Department of Public Works Dispatch for years.
Okay, if, uh, okay, I think if we could have that, uh, be tied into that information and, and work with our, our P I O team to help to distribute that information, put it on our website, but also, and also have handouts so that we're having different events and stuff, we can have the paper copies or the door hangers as well, so if we could kind of coordinate efforts, uh, with you and, uh, with your team, Mr. Mayor, and we all get together and work through, not only the internet, but also for a lot of people, they need to see it.
Well, and interestingly, I attend all of my neighborhood meetings, and I've never seen a mosquito brochure or pamphlet or anything at a neighborhood meeting.
Okay.
I've been going to them for thirty years, haven't seen one yet. So, you know, I mean, I realize that we have differing opinions, and in this case, the mayor and I are, are going to disagree, but our city needs to be doing what other cities are doing and stop spraying this stuff all over everything. We've got a problem with honeybees already, of course, they're not out at night, but neither are mosquitoes at the times we spray.
Yes, ma'am. So what I'm gonna ask is that our next Committee of the Whole Meeting, which will probably be within the next week or so, an item be placed on there where we look at some educational pamphlets, flyers, door hangers, those different various ways of, of people actually being able to see it, and put it, leave it at their door, you know, flyers and stuff.
And I'm gonna go on the city website and find it, I'm sure that we have it posted on there, I just, maybe I've just missed it.
Yes, ma'am.
While I've been surfing our city website.
So, we'll put that on as an, as an agenda item, um, educational information, and look at all the various aspects, so we can have it ready to go, hopefully within the next thirty days, to have it ready at your next round of neighborhood meetings, and all of us can distribute it to all of the neighborhoods, uh, if that's, will that work?
That's good.
Okay, alright, Mr. Mayor, we good?
Um, would that, would that cost coming out of the city council budget? Yes, sir.
Well, let's not vote for all this poison, and we'll have plenty of money for brochures and flyers.
Okay, alright, we're gonna work through all of that, okay? We'll work through all of that, okay? We'll utilize our print shop downstairs, we're gonna work through all of that.
Thirty-nine thousand six hundred dollars will buy a lot of flyers.
Councilor Abbott, okay, we're gonna work with that, Mr. Mayor, we're, everybody's gonna, we're gonna work through it, okay? We'll have it on the agenda, uh, at our next meeting, and we will work through all of that. Please, sir, and please, ma'am, we're good? We're good?
We're better.
We're better, Mr. Mayor, we good? Yes, sir? We're good, thank you, sir. Alright, we're ready to vote on the three items, oh, I just, item thirty-seven, I'm sorry.
That vote should be up.
Okay, alright, that item passes, um, next item.
Should be item fifty-six.
Um, yeah, what we're gonna do with that one, um, well, you can read it, but I'm just gonna, um, do a, a, a one-week delay on that, and we need to schedule a, um, um, Committee of the Whole Meeting to have more discussions on this.
Item fifty-six, an ordinance to amend the general fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty, by appropriating three million, two hundred thousand dollars to a city, to all city departments, personnel services for a one percent cost of living adjustment, two million, seven hundred thousand dollars to non-departmental transfer to fund one oh two capital improvement, six million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to non-departmental transfer to fund one oh three neighborhood revitalization, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to non-departmental Board of Education, other for the flight simulator, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to poli, to police, uh, G and A instruction and training, and ordinance to amend the capital fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty, by appropriating eight hundred thousand dollars to IMS computer hardware, software, one million dollars to equipment management vehicles, nine hundred thousand dollars to Carver Theater, and ordinance to amend the neighborhood revitalization fund for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty, by appropriating eight hundred thousand dollars to the first maintenance program, one million dollars demolition program, three hundred thousand dollars to Ochsmoor Community Center parking lot expansion, one thousand dollars to recycling program, two million, six hundred thousand dollars to New Georgia landfill improvements, one million, two hundred thousand dollars to Sixth Avenue Viaduct project, and three hundred thousand dollars to various park improvements, District Four.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
And I know that, that we want to have a, a meeting to discuss this, but I want to, I want to move the item simply because I am in favor of almost all of the things on here, and I know that you never get everything you want.
I, I understand.
Second.
But what I'll, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna move for a one-week delay.
Mr. Clerk, that motion's been moved appropriately second.
I have it.
Here, here's the deal, uh...
It's a motion on the table. To discuss.
What we'll do is, we just want to accept this one then, as an addendum.
Well, the item is before you to discuss.
Okay, um...
Call for a question?
Have a substitute motion, that we send it to, uh, Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Who seconded, I'm trying?
I did, Councilor Boarder, Councilor Parker.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I think we hit the speaker's request.
Yes, sir.
I know this item is before the council, it's gonna serve at the pleasure of this body. Uh, there's two things I want to remind this council, as this is already gone and been presented at a Committee of the Whole Meeting, and has been presented with a bunch of you all individually. Two notes, there are about a hundred and twenty days or less remaining in this current fiscal year. We share with our employees that if we did come upon or stumble upon a surplus, um, that we will make whole on a cost of living adjustment. Before you today is a cost of living adjustment. You got some things you're trying to do with some additional funding, I hope we wouldn't punish the city employees, leave them out of it, at least pass that portion today, send everything else back. The other portion is, I think we've explained over and over to you, there are three items before you. The Carver Theater, that's been on the table for five years, um, the Sixth Avenue Viaduct, what issue we've had for many years, and then the landfill, uh, that all our residents are depending upon. Those are non-political things, I believe at least two of those three, if not all three, are under a, a deadline as it relates to. If the bid process closes and we go back, we'll be in the same position again around not having enough funding to complete these projects, which is why they're before you today, because we haven't had enough funding to complete the projects.
Okay.
And if you want to talk about all those other things in committee, I believe that is a great place to meet in the middle.
Okay, so, you mentioned, so let's run them down, what you were saying. So of the twelve point seven, how much?
Um, it would basically be an, an item for nine hundred thousand to complete the Carver Theater, so we can complete this process in the current bid window it's in, so it doesn't close. An ordinance to amend the neighborhood revitalization fund, to amend two point six million to make sure we can complete the new cell for our landfill as it relates to our refuge, and then one point two million to complete the Sixth Avenue Viaduct project, so we can stay within that bid window as well, so it doesn't close and it costs more money than we have. As well as, um, the cost of living for our city, cola for our city employees. And I, um, would like to offer this as a substitute motion, it's, I have it right here.
Okay.
Mr. President? I want to make sure I got them all. Cola, new cell at the landfill, Carver bid, Sixth Avenue Viaduct, those are the biggies that have a short fuse.
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Alright. And then the others will, we'll meet about it and bring it, meet about it this week?
Serve at the pleasure of this council, yes, sir.
He wants me to.
Okay.
Councilor Hall, it's, uh, will you withdraw your motion?
Yeah. Uh, yes, sir, I think we have a happy meeting where, uh, pass some of the items and the other, other matters we can discuss at our, at a Committee of the Whole Meeting. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, would it be appropriate at this time for me to make a motion to approve the amended item?
Actually, that's why I was asking, Councilor Hall, do you?
Yes.
Okay, if he withdraws, then you can make that, that's the lateral motion.
Yeah.
So next, you can make that amendment now.
Okay, so I move that we approve the item as amended.
Okay.
Who made the second, sir? Thank you, sir. Alright, that amended, um, item should be before you, right about...
We're voting.
Mr. President?
We have a, we're in the middle of a vote.
Uh, we're in the middle of a vote now?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Abbott.
Alright, that item passes. Next item, sir.
Okay, um, I don't have any items on the agenda, but I think you have a U C for another budget ordinance?
Uh, yes, sir, that we also have a public purpose, too, is that what you were asking me about, Council Woods? The public purpose and also about the, uh...
Public purpose?
Well, he, this is about the parade, we understand, since the, um, since... It's not ready yet, okay, well, just, so everyone be on the, on the lookout, um, Huffman High School, when they were here, they were working on their plans, they've now decided that Friday is gonna be when they have their parade, and some of the neighborhoods, from I understand, want to participate and allocate some funding towards the, uh, the parade on Friday, and that's what...
This Friday?
Yes, ma'am. And that's, they, when they were here last week, they didn't have details, and so it came out over the weekend that they would do the parade on Friday, it rained last week, so, um, till now, uh, that's what we're working on, so, and we'll pass it hopefully before we get out of here today, so, uh...
No, I don't, I don't think they had the, the...
Okay, so do you want the, okay, alright, uh, forget your, okay, uh, let's go on to our suspended rules for our speakers, we'll come back to that.
Okay.
We'll come back to that, we'll come back to that. So, there's a motion to suspend the rules, for speakers.
All in favor, let it be known by saying, uh, all opposed. Give me one second. Um, Mr. Jenkins? Willie Jenkins? Willie Jenkins?
My name is Willie Biggs.
Mr. Biggs? Mr. Jenkins is... Mr. Biggs, Mr. Jenkins is first, you're second.
Oh, I thought you said Big.
No, I said, Mr. Jenkins, I'm sorry.
The Willies.
I'm the city council, um, uh, William Parker, Reverend Connor, uh, retirement program. I mean, Patrick Retire Program was real nice, uh, Sunday. We had a lot of peoples come out and anticipate in his retirement. And, uh, a lot of preachers came out and were well to sit. Mr. Horton, you had your men's day yet? Waiting on, waiting on your men's praise, we gonna be at Walterville Church, Sunday, Shallow Baptist Church over there at Brighton. We gonna be singing this coming Sunday over there at Brighton, this, this coming Sunday at Brighton. This coming Sunday, we'll be over there. And I'd like to say we had a big turnout for the, uh, annual, uh, Reverend Connor retirement, a lot of preachers came out, a lot of members, used to be members of Oak Street Baptist Church, and, uh, it was real nice, and, uh, just wanna tell to continue that God be with my pastor Reverend Marvin Connor from the Oak Street Baptist Church, you know? And I just wanna say, uh, to William Parker that, um, I, I need a letter from, uh, from the, um, Curtis Wayne, um, anniversary coming up pretty soon, I just need, uh, one letter for the, um, anniversary, uh, Curtis Wayne anniversary. And also, uh, I'd like to say to Counselor Parker that I would like to have some, you know, the, uh, Soul Circus coming to town. I guess y'all heard about that coming, you know, I used to anticipate in the Soul Circus coming to town, and it, it come every year, that's about. And, uh, Mr. Parker, I'd like to say I would like to have some, uh, uh, four passes for my family for the Soul Circus, uh, Mr. Parker, coming to town, and I would like to have some passes for the, uh, Soul, I think it's on the twenty-fourth, I think, it's on this, this March to some, twenty-fourth or something like that. And, and that's all, I, I, I'd like to say Collegeville, they, you know, there's, there's one of this, they really came out to support my pastor, and I just wanna say thank God for Reverend Connor could, uh, resign from pastor. I wasn't here last Tuesday, I worked last Tuesday, I wasn't here on, uh, last Tuesday, so I worked last week, you know? And I, that's all I'd like to say, Mr. Parker, that I have, uh, uh, one letter, and, uh, for you, and, uh, and, uh, that's all I'd like to say, and, um, said, yeah, and so that's all Mr. Jenkins would like to say, and still, ask you, Mr. Parker, one letter and, uh, four passes for the Soul Circus coming to town, Mr. Parker.
Alright, Mr. Biggs. Mr. Jenkins, uh, we'll work on the letter and we'll work on everything else. Yes, sir. Mr. Biggs? Good morning, Mr. Biggs, how you doing, sir? You doing alright?
Fine, thank you. My name is Willie Biggs, Penfield Park, and I need y'all help. I'm tired of getting beat up on by things that I'm taking back to my community for things that I've been told is gonna get done down here, that is not being done, such as, um, I've been, I do everything you asked me to do, and when I go back, you know, the ditches has not been cleaned, houses not been torn down, big trucks are still coming through. And so, and the residents, they beat up on me pretty bad, some of them can't enjoy the luxuries of their backyard because of when the trees were cut down, they, uh, washed into the backyards, called inspectors out, and they said they were gonna just clean them up, nothing has been done. Houses are burned up, partially burned, I called inspectors out and tell them to show them. They said, well, we can't tell that the houses are burnt, so they get the city to cut them down, clean up, well, we can tell the houses have been burnt in the back. We've got the city to come out and cut the front of the houses down, but still they have not did nothing to the houses, they're just being and his family living next door, and it's just a mess out there, so. I'm just asking for y'all to, don't continue to neglect us and leave us, we need some help out there, ditches, roads, and we just need your help, I'm attending other meetings across the city of Birmingham, and I see some difference. If, if y'all have something planned for us on the projects that we're asking for, could y'all please communicate with us and let us know where you are, so I can take it to the neighborhood. We don't, I don't know what's going on, if you got some plans, because how many things have been going on for years? Before this administration, it's been going on, so we're asking that y'all bear with us and help us.
So, I see Chief Sparks nodding his head.
Yes, so our team from DPW and customer service has spoken with Mr. Biggs, and we'll make sure we follow up on the things that he's said that hadn't been looked into to make sure he gets some, some follow-up, so we have it now.
Okay, well, you loop me in as well, 'cause.
Sure.
Because it's my neighborhood president, I have to.
We'll make sure your office.
I have three of them out there, President Webb, and also Mr. Giddens, and Mr. Biggs, so they all looking at me sideways, so. Um. Say what now? What did she say? Okay, how you doing? But, so is there any way we can, Chief will, will follow up with, okay.
We'll, we'll make sure your office is looped in on the follow-up too.
Um, and my neighborhood meetings are the second Tuesday, which is tonight, if someone could come and just let the members there know what's going on, we appreciate it. And our good news is that the crime in my area, the traffic activities are down, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Biggs. Is that all the speakers? Okay, alright, uh, do we have, uh, any videos presentations, 'cause we're gonna go to, everyone's old and new business. Okay. Who is that? Okay, yeah, we're gonna call up a video for Counselor Woods, and then we'll do our, uh, reports, district reports.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
While we're, while we're waiting, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to ask a question of, uh, public works, do we have equipment that cleans out stopped-up storm sewers? That, do we have our own equipment, or do we have to contract that out? Anybody?
I'm glad it didn't play, go ahead, um.
Had opportunity, really.
Is that playing, or do we wanna? Okay, let's just.
Spent some time with ICB last year when they did this event in Fairfield, and I participated and read to some kids there, and it was just a, uh, special event. You know, I remember walking up to the school and seeing those men kinda converge on the school from every direction and going in, spending time with kids and reading to the kids, and, uh, the kids loved it, the men really enjoyed it, and so, uh, basically begged them to bring it over to, to my side of town, here in District One, and, uh, we were able to pull it off today with, uh, Huffman Academy students and Sun Valley Elementary School students, and so I thought it was a very special day, very good for the kids, and, uh, just to see so many men come out and spend time with the children, the day was special.
So, I'm a school teacher, and I've been, um, in the, in education now for nineteen years. And what I saw as a teacher is our students of color were, um, more engaged in literature when they could see their own image in the books that they were reading. I noticed that my books that featured characters of color were being torn and worn, and I remember at one point getting upset and realizing that, no, they're interested in these books. Because of that, um, and the things that I had seen as a classroom teacher, I decided to begin this organization called ICB. And our mission is to dismantle the school to prison pipeline for children of color by engaging in literature that mirror their image. We wanted to not only expose them to other career fields, but for them to understand how important literacy is to success. We know that children who are not reading on grade level by the fourth grade, two-thirds of those children will fall victim to the prison system. And so, our, engaging our children with men who are successful, and allowing them to see these books so they can understand that if I can read, I can be anything, it's extremely important that our boys see that. Councilman Woods came to a Real Man Read on last year at Robinson Elementary in Fairfield, and he was impressed with what he saw and wanted one in his district. And I thank him for believing in us and bringing this into District One, we look forward to a beautiful partnership.
For more good news from our communities, follow the Birmingham City Council on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram.
Counselor Woods? Okay, if, well, if you could pause, there was a question asked by Counselor Abbott, and it all happened simultaneously, so. Counselor Abbott.
Yeah, it was just about sewer cleaning, how do we do sewer cleaning?
Yes, ma'am, uh, Walt Gimmins, I serve as Director of Public Works, City of Birmingham, so we have, uh, crews that go out, and they, uh, use the Sanaback sewer trucks to suck out our storm sewers, to clean all the sediment debris uh, out of those, uh, storm sewers, as well as resetting the storm sewer tops, replacing as required for our storm sewer system. That's in-house forces.
So how long after a report of a stopped-up storm sewer should people wait before they call again and ask why it hasn't been done? Weeks, months?
It, it, it can be, there are, there are over, there are tens of thousands of storm sewer inlets that are out there, so we, we have, uh, two, two crews that do this citywide, uh, that go out and do the, the cleaning of the storm sewers, so there are a lot of, there's a lot of volume out there for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Counselor Woods, are you ready for comments?
Uh, yes, sir, just a few announcements, uh, the Killer Spring Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six P M. at Smith Middle School. Uh, also, we're excited about the High-Speed Rail Conference that'll be held on March nineteenth at the BJCC. Uh, we ask you to RSVP if you're interested in participating in that, uh, you can RSVP by sending an email to clinton.woods@birminghamal.gov. Also, as we continue to celebrate our six A state champion basketball team from Huffman High School, uh, we'll hold a parade on Friday, March thirteenth at ten A M., wanna invite everybody out to, uh, celebrate the champions, and so we're excited about all they're doing this year and, uh, getting ready for the repeat, so.
Great, Counselor Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President, Tuxedo Hype Neighborhood Meeting will be tonight at five thirty P M. at the Pratt City Library. The Wollam is having a PTA meeting tonight at five thirty, uh, at a Wollam Library. The North Pratt, uh, lot, the North Pratt Neighborhood Meeting is tonight at six o'clock P M. at the, uh, North Pratt Library. Sandusky Neighborhood Meeting is tonight at six o'clock P M. at Jimmy Hudson Recreation Center. Uh, Thursday, the twelfth, at four o'clock, uh, P M., Oak Ridge Neighborhood will be meeting at Mackel Pine Recreation Center. Uh, Hooper City Neighborhood Meeting is Thursday night, the twelfth, at six o'clock P M. at the Hooper City Recreation Center. It's District Nine time, thank you.
Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, um. Mine are fairly brief today, uh, there is a District Three Town Hall meeting that will be held on Monday, March thirtieth, twenty-ninth, not twenty nineteen, twenty-twenty at the Birmingham Botanical Gardens. Um, it originally was set for March thirty-first, but that's the night that the council is going to have a night meeting, so that might have been a conflict. Wanted to remind everybody that the World Games are coming to Birmingham and that we have to be ready, twenty twenty-one is next year, so, the clock is ticking. Lots of volunteers are needed, so everybody get their shine on, because we have to, we have to, uh, show people our city and be positive. And that, for some people, is difficult, so hopefully we can work on that. We had the Rushton Park Community Garden ribbon cutting this week, this is the first community garden that's ever been allowed to be put in a city park. It was put in place of a volleyball court, which was used as a doggy waste station, and nobody ever played volleyball in it, so it's been turned into a community garden, and, uh, they have nineteen plots, and they had over ninety people request a plot, so they had to have a lottery. So, uh, it is absolutely beautiful. They did a fantastic job, had a lot of input from the Neighborhood Association, the Independent Presbyterian Church that did the lion's share of the fundraising and the work, and then Brassfield and Gory's assistance in construction, it is fabulous, I hope everybody can go by Rushton Park and take a look, and that it will be an example of what can be done in other locations where maybe things have changed and nobody plays some sport anymore, that that space could be turned into a community garden. Uh, Electronics Recycling Day was Saturday, I missed it, but, the next one is on June thirteenth, from nine to eleven thirty, at the Center Point Satellite Courthouse, so you have another opportunity to recycle your electronics. The Budget and Finance Committee meeting will be held on next Monday, March twenty-third, or the next Budget and Finance meeting will be on March twenty-third at three thirty P M. in Conference Rooms D and E. Agenda submissions are due on March eighteenth by noon, that's a whole week away, so I hope everyone can get their items in on time. On, uh, March tenth, which is today, we have the Highland Park Neighborhood Meeting at six o'clock at the Highland Golf Rac- Golf Course and Racquet Club. We have also East Avondale at the very same time, six P M. at New Bethel Baptist Church, and Forest Park relocated their meeting from last week to this week, so it's at six thirty at the Avondale Library. Remember the World Games. Mr. President, I have Dr. O'Quinn's items, can I read them also? Okay, um, for District Five, Counselor Darrell, Dr. Darrell O'Quinn, today, March tenth, East Avondale Neighborhood Association meets at six o'clock at the New Bethel Baptist Church, and Forest Park South Avondale meets at six thirty at the Avondale Library. Thursday, March twelfth, there will be three meetings on Thursday regarding the South Town Court redevelopment update. Those meetings will be at the South Court Gymnasium, and will be at nine A M., two P M., and five thirty P M., so that all, pe- everyone who lives at South Town Court can see what is going to be done and ask their questions. The Smithfield Neighborhood Association meets at six P M. at the Bethel House. Monday, March sixteenth, the Transportation Committee will meet at four P M. in City Council Chambers. Please submit agenda items no later than Wednesday, March eleventh, which is tomorrow, by four P M. Don't forget to participate in the twenty twenty census. If you have questions, please call one eight hundred nine two three eight two eight two, or visit twentytwentycensus.gov. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, and, uh, look forward to whatever day we're gonna go out, if you'll send us that reminder.
Yeah, you and me and Mr. Hoyt.
Yes, ma'am, I'll be right there.
We're gonna chain ourselves to the tree.
Yes, yes, ma'am, I wanna give a shout-out also to Vice President from Engle Look out there as well, so. She's back there laughing. Anyway, uh, Counselor, President Alexander, President Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to begin by reading the District Six announcements, Ms. Smitherman asked that I read those in her absence. Next Wednesday, March eighteenth, the Graymont Community will meet at Smithfield Library at four thirty. The District Six Job Fair will take place Wednesday, March eighteenth, at Memorial Park from ten A M. to one P M. There'll be companies such as Amazon, Renaissance Bank, Spectrum, and Birmingham Airport Authority will be in attendance. The Junior League of Birmingham will be holding community training to help end traffic, human trafficking. These classes will take place on Wednesday, March eleventh, at six P M. at the Junior League Building. And there is a note that this class will count as a credit for municipal employees that are required to fulfill a training opportunity, but the class will not earn a credit for law enforcement or first responders. So now to turn our attention to the District Seven announcements, we do have neighborhood meetings upcoming this week. To this evening, we have the East Brownville Neighborhood Association meeting, this will be at Galilee Baptist Church at six P M. And then we'll have the Riley Trevalik Neighborhood Meeting, which meets at six thirty at the Riley Center. And we have my own neighborhood meeting on Thursday, the Roosevelt Neighborhood Meeting, and we'll be meeting at the Roosevelt City Community Center, and that'll be at eleven A M. I do want to offer happy birthday wishes to Mrs. Gwendolyn Johnson, she will be celebrating her birthday, she's a long-term, over fifty-year resident of Roosevelt City, so I want to congratulate and thank Mrs. Johnson and wish her a happy birthday. Um, also, and I believe we have a, um, a flyer for this event, but I would like to announce that the Fantastic Voyage Into History for twenty twenty will take place Saturday, that's March twenty-eighth. The bus will leave from the Birmingham Police Headquarters on First Avenue North at eight A M. This particular trip is for children ten to twelve years of age, and registration information can be found at fantasticvoyage2020@yahoo.com, or two oh five two two three eleven sixty. And this particular voyage, every year, is a, um, I just can't say again, it is a fantastic voyage for the children in our community, they have an opportunity to go and just learn more about history and learn more about. more about history and learn more about the community, so if, um, you'd like to participate, please, um, take heed of tho- that information, and those are all of my announcements. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, couple of, uh, last minute things before we get out of here. One is the, uh, public purpose I mentioned, and I think everyone should have it, um, and it's a resolution, uh, determined that the Huffman Community Parade serves a public purpose, and the City of Birmingham funds will be administered to pay for said event in accordance with Section three dash one, that's seven of the general code of the City of Birmingham, and this is, uh, a celebration of their parade they're gonna have on Friday, and we want to congratulate Huffman, uh, and the great, uh, great season that they had, but also all of our, our students within the school system, and also Ramsey and all the others. So with that, um, like the move that we... Uh-huh. Mm-hmm. Okay, so before is now, Mister Clerk, is that item dealing with the public purpose for Huffman, high school parade?
Okay. Uh, UC, I need a, yeah, a vote for UC.
Clinton's gonna move the item, second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, another item?
Move the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, great, thank you, and that parade, uh, is Friday at ten A M., um, I think it's leaving from Huffman High School, and you'll make sure we get all the details, Counselor, in the mayor's office, okay. Thank you, uh... The parade route? But it'll be out in that area? So we'll have all, that's when it starts, yes, ma'am, and you'll have us full activities, so we can be out there to support. Okay, alright, the mayor will all be there. Okay, great, and congratulations again. Alright, uh, Counsel Woods, you have another item that was in Budget and Finance yesterday about the thirty thousand dollars for Grayson Park? Okay, okay, alright, this is separate from the other, but this is just a thirty thousand dollar appropriation, Mister Clerk?
One, one second, I'm trying, let me get this one together. So this is dealing with, okay, go ahead.
Uh, dealing with, uh, for Grayson Park improvements.
This is the one, the budget ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Alright, uh, need the UC for that.
Yeah, move the item. Yeah, they passed it out, uh, I think with all the other stuff we had. We need a second, Counsel Woods.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, another item?
Move the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright, that item passes, uh...
President Parker?
Yes, sir.
We had, uh, and I don't, I might be wrong on this, but I remember, uh, UC for Counsel, uh, Committee Assistant Darrell Lee traveling, but I don't remember O'Quinn, Counsel O'Quinn.
I thought it was for, uh, it was for, for Darrell O'Quinn.
Darrell O'Quinn, okay.
Yes, sir, yeah.
Just long as we make that correction.
Alright, that's, that was the, uh, Darrell O'Quinn, Counsel, I think it was March sixteenth through the eighteenth, uh, to go to, uh, for, uh, the National Share Mobility Summit, yes, sir.
We have.
Counsel O'Quinn. Okay, we're good now? We ready to record? Okay, alright, great. Um, with that, um, any other announcements, anything from anybody? Okay.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright, thank you all. I haven't declared that we adjourned yet. I have not. Okay, alright, so we're still here, we, um, yeah, we're still, uh, well, yeah, we're still here. There was a, on item of fifty-six, um, yeah, we have it, it's, he's here, Counsel Woods is in there, in the audience. Only thing we, and we'll just read it, is that it should stay, um, Eastern Area landfill instead of New Georgia landfill, that was, uh, you just make sure that's corrected, uh, on the, um... Yeah, just make the notation, yeah. No, we didn't, no, 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 we're good, we're good. Okay, alright, so we're good now? Uh, Chief, we're good now? Okay.
I'll second again.
Alright. Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, alright, we are adjourned now. Thank you all.